Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the more supervisor's work session in beautiful King William County. Olivia.
Mr. Miskowski.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Erhart.
Here.
Mr. Hodges.
Here. Okay, is everyone reviewed and if slowed, we'll have an adoption in the meeting agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move adoption of the meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
Olivia.
Mr. Greenwood. Mr. Hanson.
Aye.
Mr. Erhart.
Aye.
Mr. Miskowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hodges.
Aye.
All right, our next item is the work session matters and its legal counsel presentation. And the first, but before we get to that, we will not have any questions directed towards compensation, hourly rates, and/or retainers. Anything to do with anything else with the legal practice, we will discuss that in closed session on 26th. And the first presenter will be Callan Gates, Attorneys at Law. And who's coming up?
All right, thank you, sir. Good evening, thank you all for having us out here. We had a nice drive up this afternoon. My name is Scott Stowall, I'm a lawyer. The law firm is Callan Gates, we're based just south of Richmond, Virginia, in Chesterfield. I have been practicing 15 years, I had the privilege of learning under Frank Callan, who's the namesake in Callan Gates, who litigated across the state, federal and state court, was involved actually in local government, planning commission in Chesterfield, and we dealt, before he passed away, I helped him out with a bunch of issues, dealing both for the county and also individuals interacting with the county, for both Chesterfield County and Powhatan County. In addition, I've had the privilege of learning under Frank Rennie. Frank Rennie is still practicing. He really wanted a beer tonight, but he is actually in Colorado. He's also legal counsel for Southside Electric Co-op, and he is one of the few folks across the country who has done any kind of litigation with respect to co-op issues. So he's lecturing in, how about, where, Colorado?
Denver.
Denver, Colorado, on those issues. So he apologizes for not being able to be here, but that was booked a while back. Callan Gates has been around since 1977, longer than I've been alive, but it is a well-respected law firm. The Gates name comes from Judge Gates. His sons both practiced with us and are our partners. We today have 11 attorneys, we have nine top heavy, like some law firms. We have lots of partners and a few associates, two associates, 22 staff members, they're on hand. And really what Frank Callan, and Frank Rennie for that matter, have instilled in the firm is that we're not just the, you know, corner attorney that shows up and goes to court for traffic matters. We handle all kinds of sophisticated matters, and we always prided ourselves on being kind of the small firm, but with the complexity of a large firm. And so, let's see, click through. So Frank Rennie, we talked about, he is a, he's been practicing for 35 years. He's a retired two-star admiral with the Navy. He was, he actually had call over during 9/11, was a part of that. But, and what's impressed me about him is he's always been able to maintain an extremely successful law practice in addition to doing that. And so since he's come back, he's been county attorney for Lunenburg County for the past 10 years. And as a part of that, we've also done work for the town of Victoria, and we are also the town attorney for Cape Charles. And so we've had 10-plus years of experience dealing with local government issues. And in Lunenburg, similar I think to the situation here, we took over from a longtime county attorney, and they were kind of transitioning in, and as a part of that, we've been able to see the progression of going from the longtime town attorney to what we've been able to provide as a law firm.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Are we gonna do questions as we go through, or you wanna hold them for then?
That's fun.
What would you recommend?
I love questions. I used to teach a few, or I-
You can go along.
-just preach it, so ask.
Well, I was committee representative for Lunenburg, I'm familiar with that area. Of course, Carver Cretson boat prison down there, 15 or 16 years ago. Have you had any interactions, challenges dealing with county and state interactions? And what was one of the more challenging situations?
Probably, I mean, you can chime in on this, Henry, if you have thoughts. The jail, I think that had kind of been established by the time we got there, there were always issues that come up with it. One of the bigger things would be, they, we read at the ordinances, the code of ordinances, that hadn't been updated in 15 years. Probably one of the other bigger issues was dealing with, there's a landfill, and that is the regional landfill, so it involves not only the county, but also DEQ and different state agencies, and trying to deal with that whole process.
You said the county ordinance, you mean like water and sewer and zoning and those types of things?
The whole, yeah, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Are you familiar with, or have you ever, I guess, dealt with split level situations such as we have here?
You're, you're one of two in the state. We're familiar with how it works, we haven't had to deal with that straight on, but I, we get the concept and how that differs from other ways of doing it. Yes, sir. So, I'm, I'm involved in the law firm, I'm a, as I told my nine-year-old when I was trying to explain it, I'm a paper pusher. So I'm, I'm the one that is behind the scenes, I deal with contracts, sort of employment law-related issues. So I'm, that's where I've been involved with the local county government, and through Frank and our service there is to negotiate all kinds of different types of contracts, dealt with all kinds of different transactions that have come up, dealt with employee issues, including, you know, dealing with having the administrator position vacated and having to go through that whole process of filling who would be in that role. Keith Gates, who's not here, he's the son of the Gates in the name, he specializes in real estate. So he handles a lot of real estate transactions that we've had with the county, whether they're selling, refinancing, purchasing land, and those related issues. And Henry, can give his own background here?
Thank you for having us, Mr. Chairman. My name is Henry Jones, I'm associate at Callan Gates, and I'd venture to say I'm probably the youngest attorney here offering the services, but I've been with the firm full-time, coming up on four years. I was with them for a full year beforehand as an intern. And I grew up in eastern North Carolina, so I'm not originally from Virginia, but I came to Virginia in 2005. I went to board school just down the road, at Chrysler School, so familiar with the area, familiar, you know, much like Lunenburg, there are a lot of overlaps with King William. And I'm also the assistant county attorney for Lunenburg. So I work hand-in-hand with Frank on a whole lot of different issues, whether that be if Frank's not able to make or supervisors meeting, I'll stand in, run closed session. And I also specialize in civil litigation. So on the county side of things, that's been anything from zoning enforcement, folks want to clean their yard out, collection matters, really any and everything on the civil litigation side of things, I've been able to help out with. So that is my background, and I work in essentially a support role for Frank, and he'll hand, hand things off to me, have me litigate things for the county. So that's my background, and kind of how I've come to be.
Would you say your experience with Lunenburg and dealing with zoning ordinance issues, that Lunenburg is passive, medium, or aggressive in terms of that?
In terms of enforcement, or just my experience overall?
Well, your experience more before than after.
Yes, so I've helped draft ordinances for Lunenburg, I know there's a noise control ordinance I helped do. And then also on the enforcement end, in terms of our take on how, I guess, aggressive we would get, you know, we, I mean, it's a small county, and I grew up in a small county, and we usually tend to, in terms of how aggressive we are in enforcing them, we like to give folks the benefit of the doubt. So if there's any way to correct the zoning ordinance, that's the route we'll take. I mean, we've gone to court, litigated it, gotten injunctions, that's something we have experience with. So, I mean, I've worked with those, we've actually worked with them on the landowner's side for different localities in zoning ordinance challenges.
Lose animals, abandoned vehicles.
Abandoned vehicles, a bunch of tires that were left out. I think the Virginia code, there's a limit on, it's like 300, if someone had like 2,000 tires. You know, landowner complaints when there are zoning violations, all of that is stuff that we've got experience with. And, you know, items that we've looked at, and either gone all the way through the court process, or we've been able to resolve short of a full resolution in court. So any and everything that you have, we've, we've got experience with. So.
Which brings me to, a next, kind of highlighting some of what we've done with the local government, and so, in our proposal, we proposed Frank Rennie as the county attorney. I would work as an assistant county attorney, supporting him. So some of our experience, we've already mentioned, Frank's obviously the county attorney for Lunenburg, and I'm the assistant county attorney, and we're county attorneys for various localities in Virginia. As I mentioned, drafting resolutions, ordinances, zoning ordinance enforcement, ordinance challenges from the landowner's side. So we not only have, when you're defending the ordinance, but we've looked at ordinances when we've got a property owner, and we're trying to challenge something, whether it be on constitutional grounds, conditional use permit, or regulations. We've got that experience as well, so we can look at it from not only the locality side, but what folks who might be challenged at something in court, we go after. And represent various boards and agencies throughout Virginia. So if it's local government related, Mr. Rennie has handled it, and he's got a ton of experience with it. Another one of our areas that Mr. Rennie really has got a lot of experience in is elections. So special elections, he's overseeing it. After the census was, came out in 2010, he had a whole big project on drawing all the district lines, making sure everything was in compliance. So that is something that he is familiar with, and has done a whole lot of hands-on work with. Something else that we've kind of already hit on is civil litigation in eminent domain. This is something I've been doing since I started practice not so long ago, but Mr. Rennie's got the experience, over 30 years of doing this. On the civil litigation side, he's been doing it since he graduated law school. Thousands of civil litigation matters, whether it's municipal tour, contract, you know, landfill contracts, literally everything, we've got experience doing. On the eminent domain side, and something that kind of distinguishes Mr. Rennie is, he has worked for the condemning authorities, so whether it be VDI, Lunenburg County, Southside Electric Cooperative, he's got experience on the condemning side. He also represents the landowners on the other side of those condemnation cases. So he's got that experience of, you know, when you're asking to take the land, or you're doing the taking, and he knows the buttons to press when you're on the other side. So I think it's something that is, is pretty valuable, and it's helped a lot of our clients out. And I'm going to let Scott talk about his contract work and kind of his experience on that.
Sure.
And I alluded to it in government bio intro, but all those contracts we did there, we dealt with through the county, everything from real estate contracts to utility companies, solar farms, like I said, employment-related contracts. We have helped them with bond offerings, so the corporate finance component of it, construction contracts, all those aspects, we've been involved with, and the county really, Lunenburg will defer to us and a great deal to negotiate those and get them in the best shape going forward. And so again, that's where Frank gets me involved from that standpoint. And then, so real estate, in part that goes hand-in-hand with it, but whether they're buying, selling, working out contracts for someone else to come in and be the tenant, something that's owned by IDA or CDA, we've been involved in those lease agreements, and then as well as just land use zoning, as we were discussing. Everything from, we've represented both sides on getting things rezoned, conditional use permits, but also from the locality side, not only drafting the ordinances, but then enforcing them as well. And like I said, our approach has always been that we're, we can give you big firm results without the big firm ever paying. And so it's a cost savings there that we can offer and pass forward, and you would be among one of a few localities that would be clients. And so there's a lot of attention would be given to that. Frank Rennie, I think from the military background, we have like bi-weekly meetings where we discuss the county and every single issue, so everyone in the firm is up to speed on what's happening. All that happens in a cost locality, because it's not your job for us to be organized internally. And we are, I mean, because we have all seen both sides, both the product sector and the public sector, we get the practicality of things. And so being more result-oriented than getting bogged down in some of the process and complex circumstance, and understanding the pressure points from both sides, I think is extremely helpful. And I know it's presented in the RFP that we submitted, but again, about the organization, the regular communication, and that's why Frank does kind of have, not just, he's certainly the face, but we are also involved so that if any issue ever comes up, I can't tell you the number of calls I've farmed on different issues when he's unavailable, which is rare, but when it does come up, I'm there. And experience, again, Frank Rennie's been dealing with local government issues, and to a lesser extent, I have. 15 years he's been doing it for 30-plus years, so we understand the issues, not, not every issue that would be germane to King William, but we understand what this county will be facing going forward, and we've seen it in Lunenburg County. And I think we're cost-effective. There's been a few opportunities for us to have been replaced in, in both Lunenburg and some of the other localities, and they always see that there's a value promise that we deliver on.
Have you already checked for conflicts? I've tried looking it up, and it looks like they're, they had their meeting on the state. Is that their actual meeting, or was that what's?
That was the work session. Were you talking about Lunenburg?
Yeah.
It was just a work session.
Right, are there, you know, you look to see if there are conflicts with King William County?
Yes, that's the reason we put in the RFP, is based on that.
So I see it just in the, in the response here about, you know, monthly staff meetings for our base and things like that. In Lunenburg, do you spend any time in the offices independent of that, or is it all through no contact?
No, he's, my work family is from Lunenburg, and then Frank is down there as well often. He's also general counsel for Southside Electric Co-op, so he's down that neighborhood, probably two, three days or weeks, four meetings if they need him.
So Gordon Irving gives you a good reference?
I know.
He's the town manager in Victoria, a long time ago, so if Gordon gives you a good reference, that's a, that's pretty good. He's a tough bird.
You said that. All right, we certainly appreciate you having us out and giving the opportunity. If you all have any questions, we will ask, we appreciate your consideration.
All right, I think I did.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Wasn't that Craddock Terry, wasn't that the shoe company that was down there? I'm sorry. Craddock Terry, wasn't that the shoe company?
Craddock Terry, yeah.
All right, let's say we came here again.
You been to Lynchburg recently?
No.
They turned the Craddock Terry's shoe factory into a boutique hotel.
Oh, wow.
True story.
And next up is Sands Anderson.
What are you doing there? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Andrew McRoberts of Sands Anderson, shareholder. With me today are Chris McKenzie and Vivian Giles. The materials that we sent you previously, hopefully you've got a copy of them. I'm gonna go over them briefly, since you've already received it and seen it. One thing you will not see in here is Vivian Giles, because she is fairly new with the firm, but she's not new to local government. For a decade, she's been the county administrator and county attorney in Cumberland County, which is similar between William in many respects, and different in a lot of others.
She's not very used to that.
Well, as the county administrator and the county attorney, she's been able to guide Cumberland's, you know, economic development, as well as her finance, their finances, and also their legal side. And so she's not in there, but I'm going to give you sort of the verbal story on her, since her name's not in the materials we gave you. Sands Anderson is unique really among Virginia law firms, in that we have the largest number of local government lawyers in any law firm in the state. We, we, there are very few issues that will come before a local government client requires that we can't answer, because we have experience in all areas, and that can't be said about any firm either. Whether it's employment, whether it's litigation, whether it's land use and development, whether it's utilities, whether it's economic development, whether it's public finance, whether it's mortgage coverage. I mean, everything from the minute to the large, we've seen it all. And as a law firm, we've been around since 1842. We are the longest-standing business in the city of Richmond. We just recognized that just a couple of years ago. We're very proud of that. It originally started out with Alexander Sands in 1842. He established law practice ultimately with his brother and his sons, and Sands' name has carried through the 150 years since then, and we've been very proud to serve. The government group at Sands Anderson goes back about 25 or 30 years. Dan Siegel, who many of you may know, Dan. Dan is a municipal finance lawyer. He advises boards of supervisors, county administrators on public finance matters. He also advises EDAs on how to get things done in counties, ways to creatively address the needs of counties in a financial way. He had a vision of starting a group of specialist lawyers at Sands Anderson that would come in and be able to address every issue a local government client had. And so he began recruiting attorneys. Over time, he recruited me. I was the county attorney, first in Culpeper. Before that, I was assistant county attorney in Arlington County. Then I was county attorney in Gooseland County for a long time, and joined Sands Anderson in 2009, about a decade ago. And for about 25 years, I've been a county attorney for one or others, or several localities in Virginia, answering every question they have, handling their litigation, advising them on land use, advising them on tax assessment matters, and doing the litigation. Chris McKenzie has been sort of my right-hand man in a lot of the zoning and land use matters. He's also been chief in-house counsel at one of our large county clients, and has actively represented the planning department, and has essentially represented the planning mission, and has helped them through all of that. But what I value the most at is a super smart, super good zoning attorney, who knows how to avoid litigation for the clients, and how to advise the clients to take steps so that they stay out of court, because court's very expensive, and I don't care who's representing you, it's not cheap. But if you know the law and you can help avoid litigation, that is where the real money is. We view ourselves at Sands Anderson as being the law firm that you can hire once and get everything done. And not only that, we've got a deep bench, so if you need an answer and you need it now, it'll be now, not a problem. It doesn't matter if somebody's traveling, because we will find somebody else. I answer questions for my clients, but I'm traveling all the time, and that's just the way that practice of law goes now. The, the deep bench includes folks that are experts in employment law, employment litigation, public finance, zoning, litigation, animals. Vivian is an expert in solar. What, can you explain a little bit about your background in solar, because that may be something that they will see?
Well, it's a relatively new development in Virginia, and a big cause, you had these solar companies coming, coming along in rural Virginia, and just to tell you, I did come to Sands Anderson from Cumberland County, which is similar in size geographically, a little bit smaller than King William in population, but I am from Agamatics and Buckingham, that's where half my families, one half my family is in the other. So I am very familiar with rural Virginia, and that's the area that I was representing. So in our, in our south side region, we got approached by several solar companies pretty quickly, and I ended up on a solar work group right now. Some of the counties decided to come together, so, and a group formed, and then a subgroup of that formed, and I have been working with the solar industry. So there are a few local government representatives at the table with some, with some folks from the solar industry, trying to work out some sort of agreement with respect to solar coming into the rural localities, consuming large amounts of land, real estate, which really in my opinion is what is our asset in rural Virginia. But right now, because of the tax exemption, the benefit really to rural Virginia is very small in terms of dollars. So we're trying to remedy that a bit, to the degree, to the extent that we can. That's really the mission of the business that we're working.
One of the success stories that I'd like for Chris to tell you about is, because of his background in working with our government group and our clients on proffer rezonings, and in fact handling litigation regarding conditional use permits and things like that, he was in a position to avoid a significant potential downside for one of our clients in the area of the proffer laws, which changed recently. And what you want to tell them about that?
Sure, yeah, I'm Chris McKenzie, and I apparently do mostly real estate work for our local government clients, so on zoning and land use. And one of the things that comes up, fair amount, I'm sure you know, are proffers, and conditional use permits, special exceptions, and all of those applications. And there are two statutes out there that are trapped in there, and one of them deals with rezonings, residential rezonings, and profits associated with that. Another one deals with unconstitutional conditions associated with any application whatsoever. And we had one application coming through, and, you know, I can't go into too many details, but suffice to say, you know, we were just, wanted to be very safe, and wanted to make sure that the county didn't make any missteps, because it was a large project. And we had, you know, I think some attorneys representing the applicant, who were used to doing things the way they'd done before these statutes got passed, which was, they've talked to the board member and the planning commission member from that particular district, bring them out to the property and show them everything that's going on, and you know, try to convince them that why this is a good idea, and why the application should be granted. And, you know, while there's certainly merits to that, and certainly as, you know, people representing their constituents, you do need to go talk to them. But with these statutes, there's a lot of risk there now, because it really lowered the bar to go to court as an applicant if you're not happy with the decision you get from the board. And so we had to advise this client to say, I understand why you want to do this, but let me explain the statute to you, and our advice to you is to do everything you can in a public hearing in front of everybody. You know, let them convince you at the board meeting, not at their property. The fear being, there's a misunderstanding, and it's just you and this other person out at the property, and somebody hears a suggestion for a cash proffer that nobody meant to many, but that lands you in court, and when you land in court over something like that, it can take a long time to resolve the matter. So our advice was to do everything in public hearing, in public meeting, and that's what they did, and they didn't get the decision they liked, and sure enough, we landed in court. But we didn't have that claim, because there was just nothing that they could allege. It didn't happen in front of a public body with minutes and recording and everything. So, you know, in that sense, I think it did head off potential litigation for the county, just being aware of the current state of the law, and I'll tell you, those laws are changing. They change them every year, because they're so problematic. And actually, Andrew and I teach a class on zoning and land use, a couple of different classes, and I, and no one likes to toot their own horn, but Andrew teaches the class most, and I'm still catching up, but we have to redo the material every year, because it's changing every year. The other thing I will say on that front is, you know, you have the three of us, who I think you probably see the most of, if you're training the firm, and probably a lot of me, because I'd be coming to work with the planning department, I'd be doing the zoning enforcement litigation, things like that. But when a question comes up, it goes out to the whole government group, and the whole government group- And the whole government group, you know, a real tricky one or a really unique one weighs in on it. And I will say that Andrew McCroft is usually one of the first people to answer and he's 95% of the time got the right answer just like that because he knows it because he's been doing it for so long.
Well, you're very kind. I will, I will say one more thing about that particular case that he was talking about is the lawsuit came in even though it was like, oh, well, we never sue you, of course, but then they do. And when they do, because of his advice, they were not able to allege certain things. We were able to go in, file a demur and end the case within 60 days. And they appealed that to Supreme Court. Supreme Court denied the writ. So it basically was over just like that. And that was because of good lawyering, but it was also because the clients listened to us about how dangerous those statutes were. We have a lot of clients in local government. We are the county, city, or town attorney for about 14 different places. Over the years that we've had a government group, we've probably represented about 40% of the localities in Virginia, which is a significant amount. We represent 15 industrial or economic development authorities. We represent 21 regional and special authority clients such as broadband, solid waste authorities, regional jail authorities, planning districts, airport authorities. We represent 24 public school divisions. And while I know that you guys have another board, the school board that's actually running the schools, school issues do come up to the board from time to time. And what's nice is I don't have to go and read Title 22.1 to it and learn school law. I've got an expert who's two doors down and I can say, what's the answer on this? I get it just like that because he's an expert.
On that, do you represent the King William schools?
Brad King is the attorney that handles that.
But the firm?
The firm, yes.
So how is, how, how is a potential conflict of interest avoided there if there will be some type of lawsuit or situation involving the two separate boards?
Well, we have a number of counties where that's the case, where we represent the school board. We also represent the county at large. We look upon it as the law is the law. And what I've found over the years is if everybody has an understanding of what the law is, then the bodies themselves are the ones that make policy decisions, we don't. And so, we advise everybody on what the law is and then they will work it out themselves. And we have ways that we can help boards work things out. Now, if there ever were a lawsuit of some kind that really came to loggerhead, so that's very rare, but, you know, potentially could happen, then that's about the only case I can think of where that might have other counsel involved. But typically, we advise our clients on what the law is and we're able to get our clients to move past whatever kind of issues that they may have. And that is, and it helps on having the same basic understanding of what the law is as opposed to lawyers disagreeing and then that's filling into a political discussion or a policy argument. Or if you start on the same basis of what the law is, then in my experience, the issues get resolved. Do you have many issues with schools?
You, you do not see it representing a potential conflict?
I don't because we do it in many places. And, you know, I think that their primarily job is running schools. Your job is to run the rest of the government and to fund the schools. And we see those as really two different things. Every once in a while, of course, the school board may need your help, in which case we'll advise you as to what your ability is legally to help them. They may have issues with your decisions, but their issues will not be legal. Their issues will inevitably be policy-based, based upon money or things like school funding or construction funding or other things like that. I really have not seen issues that can't be resolved through a normal political process. What we try to do is keep the lawyers out of it because that's what really costs you We represent 16 other localities and school divisions serving as special counsel in some way or the other. We serve 39 localities as bond counsel. We serve 25 localities performing delinquent real estate tax collection work. And that work is really, really great just to, to form our delinquent tax collection team for a minute. They actually do it at no cost to our clients, which is really nice because there's a statute that provides for our attorney's fees to be paid by the delinquent taxpayer. And so, that's been very successful in, in all of the localities that we've done it. As a matter of fact, when I was first Culpeper County Attorney in 1996, my treasurer came to me and said, hey, we want to hire a law firm to do delinquent tax collection. And we got Tom Bricken out of Fredericksburg, who was doing exactly the model that we follow today. And then, long story short, I go through like a couple of different local governments. I ran Sands Anderson in 2009 and I realized that Culpeper County is still a client because Tom Bricken and Sands Anderson merged. That's how we got a Fredericksburg office. And so, the client that I brought to the firm in 1996 is still a firm client today because it's doing a great job for Culpeper. We perform a very wide variety of services, so it's a one-stop shop. You make one call to the county attorney and it gets handled, period. We like triage things when they come in. Like Chris said, often the answer is, here's the answer, here's the statute, here's where you can find the answer, here's how we advise you handle it so you don't need a bunch of legal services. If it needs more than that, then we will assign it to the lawyer that can handle it most quickly and has the most experience. For example, if it's drafting an ordinance, there are very few ordinances out there we haven't drafted. There's very few types of contracts we haven't handled. We assign it to people who know stuff and then we probably have a form on our system ready to roll. It makes things a lot more affordable for our clients and we like it that way. If there is a situation under which one attorney, maybe the regular attorney, can't do something for some reason because they are, you know, out or sick or whatever, then there's a deep bench, a bunch of lawyers out there who can actually step in and handle that. And so, we're happy to handle that. I know that land use is a major deal here. Certainly in every rural county I've ever represented, whether it's an in-house county attorney or at Sands Anderson, land use has been a big deal. And rightly so. It's a thing that touches folks' lives and it is an economic driver often. And so, it's a very important issue. We have a great depth of bench in land use expertise, not just in drafting ordinances, but in defending them, interpreting them, and advising. We do a lot of code enforcement when we're asked to by the clients. Mr. Earhart, you asked earlier about, you know, how aggressive enforcement is. Our approach is we follow our client's lead. And so, if they want to be aggressive, we can be aggressive. If they don't wish to be aggressive, then we won't. Our job is to be a lawyer, not to be the county administrator or the chairman of the board supervisors or the board. Our job is to listen to our client's needs and handle them, and that's what we do. I will tell you my personal philosophy as, as a county attorney for many years, and that is compliance is the key. And whatever it takes to hit compliance is what we try to do. Sometimes that's just simply a visit to the person and explaining what the law is and why it's that way. Sometimes it's a stern letter, sometimes you've got to go to court. And it's just a matter of finding the pressure point on, on the situation. But again, we would always follow the client's lead on that.
What towns do you represent?
We represent the talent in areas. We represent...
Ashley, Culpeper?
Yeah, I'll listen up here. You know, we've represented a number of the years. You know, we don't currently represent this town attorney, but I think we've represented them on various things, including municipal finances. And we represent the city of Galax. We represent the county of Essex, the county in Richmond. We represent the county of Caroline. We represent a whole bunch of different counties out in southwest. We represent the city of Radford. So it's that breadth of experience that we bring to the table. We do a lot of work in local taxation. Local taxation, of course, is the lifeblood of every local government because you can't spend money in the budget unless you bring it in the other end. You know, I work closely with commissioners of the revenue and with treasurers to make sure they know what the law is, to make sure that they can do the best job they can do for you. I know you've got a reassessment going on right now, going to be effective, you know, in the next year. You may very well see some tax assessment appeals. One of our specialty areas and one of the things that I've handled frequently throughout my career are tax appeals. And my goal first is to try to see if we can't find and administrate a solution for those kind of concerns and bring it to a resolution in some way. If we do see an appeal to court, then there's really no firm better suited to go to court and win or go to court and evaluate the case and settle it if we have to. But our tax assessment defense team is really the tops in the state. So I'm very proud of the team that does that.
And one of, I might just add aside, one of the benefits of doing a lot of tax assessment defense, you have a lot of lawyers that are familiar with that law, which is very nuanced and pretty complex. But we have a wide array of experts that we have a working relationship with and we can bring them on because those trials, when they do go to trial, are big rate experts because even someone to come in and testify us to the fair market value of property. And we have a lot of experts that we work with that are used to developing those valuations in these types of circumstances. So that's a big asset for us too.
Obviously, we have a whole lot of stuff in writing that I will not go through, but we do believe that we would be a good choice for King William. We were discussing it on the way up in Florida. We think we'd be a good fit. We represent a lot of localities similar to King William in a lot of ways. We have economies of scale, which we believe we can bring to the table. And so, we're happy to answer the questions you have and we appreciate your consideration of Sands Anderson, Mr. County Attorney.
Chris, would you be the point of contact for environmental type stuff since your name is, I think, repeatedly?
Yes, yeah.
So what, what kind of interaction experience do you have with stormwater, groundwater withdrawal, those kinds of things that we're faced or hamstrung with here?
Sure, yeah. We have a number of lawyers at the firm that do it. And usually what we would do is, you know, I would be your point of contact at the, you know, I would come to meet with you about it and we would, you know, but I wouldn't be the only one that would look at any given issue. But yeah, I work with a number of counties on those issues, including some in this area to deal with some of the flood and problems that you're familiar with. You know, you would see me, but you'd probably get the benefit of higher suppliers that work on those issues in particular. But, you know, yes, I mean, I do work with ENS and with code clients. As a matter of fact, just coincidentally, this is a little bit of a side, but I've had a number of local board building code appeals, which is, you know, the building code, but no one ever gets them. And for some reason, I've had three or four in the last couple of months. So I work with everybody in the planning department, from your zoning technician to your building inspector, the person doing environmental compliance, everybody in that department would be, I'd probably be their point of contact with the firm.
And really, I mean, stormwater and ENS are one of those things that are unfounded mandates. The state decided it was important and they said, local government, you got to go handle it.
Sure. A couple of them, yeah.
Although we live in South Dakota and we're not a, just they might call us a locality.
MS, MS4.
I knew what you meant.
Sorry, yeah. See, because we weren't, we weren't that, because we're on the other side of, so we had that benefit. So we, we kind of, but I did work closely with Louis Lawrence and Jack Miller when, so, on some of those stormwater issues, actually, we went to some of the hearings that did here on that because they asked me to speak up basically on behalf of rural Virginia, just to, just so that the smaller locality and again, down to come here on the, 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 we were going to hit the heart of them, we were, but nonetheless, we were trying to push that so that that doesn't suck. So owners on the smaller locality.
And I can tell you, Ms. Earhart, this is a example. Last month, we had an ENS issue at one of the counties that I work with and there just, there wasn't compliance with the plan. And so, we put together a quick stop work order, we delivered it, we got it fixed within seven days, everything was put back together, they got to keep building, and we got our compliance. So it was, you know, a pretty easy fix, but something that we're familiar with.
And really, land use has been a big issue, of course, you know, with the change in the map a few years ago, you know, it's affected a lot of people. And so, we, we worked with that. And so, you know, environment law, it was not a very big thing 30 years ago, it's a big thing now. And part of that's trying to chase a Chesapeake Bay and the rivers, you know, like the monkey right now.
And I just, if anyone can clarify a point, you know, when we do some of these internal tete-a-tetes and we talk it over and I confer with people, it doesn't mean you have five or six lawyers all been laying on the file at the same time. That's just trying to cut down the amount of research saying, you can do it with this and you can put it in the right way.
Right. We don't charge for triage.
Right.
We, we charge you for the legal work.
Right.
And because the person who ends up doing the legal work is probably going to afford, like Chris mentioned, the fact that he handles several board building code deals, which are kind of rare, but like I said, we've had three of them in our places recently. You know, he handled the first one and then he did such a great job, I signed the second one to him and the third one to him. And, you know, it's, again, economies of scale, he didn't have to learn it all, again and again. So, is there any questions?
Again, as far as coming actually on-site here in our offices, is that as needed? Do you have scheduled meetings with staff regularly? What's the plan?
Well, we're open to whatever the client wants, honestly. We have all sorts of arrangements across the state. Sometimes we go to the meetings, sometimes we have office hours, sometimes we just get calls on the phone, which of course is the cheapest option. But there's lots of different ways to handle it and we're happy to discuss it because we've done every which one.
And Mr. Earhart covered a question that I had thought of about environmental stuff, but if you work with Louis and with Jack, and I think you probably were brought up to speed on that.
Yeah, yeah. Louis, Louis is a character cutter. You know, I do think that here on Middle Peninsula, we're very familiar with how you all do a lot of things in regional cooperation through the Middle, Middle Peninsula Planning District Commission and regionally, because that's really the only way to affordably do some of the things that the state has many local do. So we appreciate that you all have handled it that way. Thank you. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. You'll have a good rest of your meeting.
Next item on the agenda is crime and rescue update, Detective Chief Laura.
This time you all had copies of my notes prior to us coming in. Do you want me to give you them line by line? Do you want to just for me to pull out each topic and we can answer any questions that you have?
Well, you got anything to do with you?
I think one of my, Ms. Tastary, did you have to follow up what we talked about today?
Yes, I did. I reached out to Skip Harcy and he was going to forward the report for me.
One of my questions that I had that was in here was at some point in the past, we had talked about the fire marshal and providing inspections and that service here in the county. And we haven't got any reports on that from the fire marshal or the, or the department in the past. I was visiting a business today, actually it's in Mr. Hanson's district, but he lives in my district. And he said no one had ever been there. He had to actually call over to Hanover to get some information. So hopefully that fire marshal report will start including some information in the past coming in the future.
Are you all still conducting, there is?
I know that Mr. Harcy had an arrangement prior to us being here and he said he would continue to do that for us since we have been in play. All of your fireworks scenes for 4th of July, they have to be inspected in order to open operate. He did all this for us in the two house fires we've had since we have been in this position. He has come out and taken the reports for this. So anything prior to the end of June when we came in, I believe is going to be handled in a report that will be given to you, but from here forward, we have been working with him to get what we need.
Okay. And it was just a, like when I, when I was ready to do it today, I think we still don't know what's going on with the fire marshal report. So again, hopefully in the future, we'll see something like that. Other than that, I don't really have anything specific.
How are we doing on staff?
We're doing okay on staffing. We hired six part-time. Out of those six part-time, we have one who is injured and two others who are going through recruit school. So that does pull three people off of our part-time. But we have managed with the exception of one day to keep us staffed at two units at all times that are able to go out and answer calls. Our personnel, all of them with the exception of one, has been released on the fire engine, which is fantastic what that allows us to do. which is fantastic what that allows us to do, is send the fire truck out on calls and still leave an ambulance behind if need be, depending on how the call comes in, so that we have coverage for both and we're not tying up all our resources unnecessarily.
But monitoring the calls, I can tell you, you know, our resources many times are gone.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we are getting multiple calls on top of each other. And even somebody mentioned we hired a light line of whatever it is. Problem is, we don't have the equipment for them to use, but they can.
We, that is something that can be looked at. I will tell you, it poses two very, excuse me, two very large problems. The first being is equipment. We don't have the equipment to put them on it, and they don't come with the equipment. And the second is they handle absolutely no fire calls. So what that really means, when we say fire calls, we think of just a house on fire. That's actually not it. They don't handle any auto accidents, they don't handle any extracations. So we're now paying staff in play. It's an auto accident where a fire E M T can at least get in the car and begin care, life or cannot. So they're very limited in what they can do for us as a county and a service they can provide for what we're paying. That would be a better way to shift it into hiring more full-time E M T firefighter paramedics who can staff all of our equipment and serve the county.
Are you getting good turnout in part-time?
Yes.
Workers, actually working?
Yes, sir. And we absolutely are. I have no complaints there. The biggest thing that we're dealing with schedules are all twenty-four hour shifters somewhere else, and they also have families. So a lot of them live in the county or want to move into the county, which is a great thing because they're more than just firemen, they're vested in what we're doing, too.
Now, how about volunteer numbers? Do we have?
Volunteer, I've had one new volunteer come in. I did have people ask. We set up at National Night Out and talked to people. We're going to County Fest. We have, as I said, everybody, as far as Mango Hick and West Point, we've gotten together with them, and we're now precepting their people, too, so that we can all work together in getting members released. So as if Mango Hick gets seven new people in, gets seven people they can send down to us to get their medical releases and so forth, so that we can get them on the street quicker.
How many volunteers, what do you ask, how many volunteers do we have at the station one?
We have the ten that are on the roster, that were on the roster, and the one that's been added. So we do have, I have one dedicated gentleman who probably runs E V twenty-four, thirty-six hours a week, and then I have an actual A O S crew that comes in every other Friday. And they allow us to have a third ambulance staff that is an A O S ambulance, and that stage is twice from going anywhere. So invaluable.
There was discussion a while back, and we touched on it a bit in the last meeting, about the question of, you know, sharing staff across the agencies. Do we get more clarity on that, on policies there, any legal problems?
One of the things that we did, I did, was mention it when I looked through my notes, is we talked about being able to drive other apparatuses. That, we did look into that, and we are fine driving other apparatus and so forth. Obviously, just like with anything else, you need to be familiar with a piece of apparatus. We can't have some be driving a tanker who's never driven a tanker. But if we need to, we can cross staff and do so. And we already do that with our paramedics. If one of the areas does have a basic crew up and not the advanced life support, our paramedic will ride with them and help stack that unit. So we're doing that with that, and then we can help out as in the Waterton's fire trucks. If we have to send something out, we have an agreement with them now where we can borrow one of their fire trucks to come in. It's covered under our insurance, their insurance, and it leaves us, so we're not sitting without a fire truck.
And is that an agreement of all stations, when you can?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there was not any HIPAA issues?
The HIPAA issues only pertain to the patient information. So us borrowing vehicles should have nothing to do with HIPAA. And then no matter who runs the call, all of that is protected in our reporting system. So that should not be an issue whatsoever. Our reporting system that our, that company one is going to use is the same reporting system that is protected, and Chris and Tana.
So Mango Hick was reporting differently?
I cannot comment on that. That would be something we want to talk to Mango Hick about, but I would bet good money that they're compliant with HIPAA.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I meant as far as somebody sharing people, I thought there was uncertain people that were able to see that HIPAA information, because the employee X from.
I think that's a question about image trend, wasn't it?
Yeah, that may be a different reporting system. The reporting system that is the medical system that is state regulated, anyone who is in that system, all of that goes into the state, and that's all protected by HIPAA.
Right, right, right.
So that should not be, there shouldn't be an issue where at any point there is a HIPAA violation going on.
Right, okay.
That was, Mr. Chairman, I think, if I could, what I recall from that, Mr. Ehrhart, is that was why Mango Hick was resistant to reporting their information on image trend with regards to us actively tracking their calls and dispatching the responses and stuff like that. But now, with us getting those numbers to the sheriff's office, I don't think that's, I think that's off the table now, really, as to whether or not they need to be doing that to get their numbers out to the county.
Yeah, we are not, we're not doing that, and no one's brought that to our attention.
I thought there originally was some issue about that if you weren't a volunteer there, you're not subject to seeing that information.
There was a complaint from that.
Different, there was a station one or station six or whatever, you know, you can't see the, from Mango Hick, because you're not employer volunteer there, it's a HIPAA violation for people that aren't there to see it.
Correct, but if they call in our paramedic to assist them, it then becomes our paramedic's call.
Okay.
So at that point, the call is turned over to the A O S care that is coming in, and now becomes their call. They fall in line under the HIPAA rules, it's all one call, and it always goes to the hospital. So it's not, our paramedic's not bringing it out, bringing it back, it's all the same system, and it's all transported the same way through the internet.
Okay. And I guess Mr. Hodges' conversation earlier and your responses, in terms of an interim or temporary situation for automatization of staff life care would not be something that we would necessarily pursue or recommend at this point?
I would not recommend life care. On the sheer factor is of the fact that we would put money out, we don't have equipment to put them in, and they can only do a portion of the job. That is, that is my recommendation on it, because we have now opened up to being a fire and EMS response team. So we are now going to take money and dump it into something that is the only one thing that we have agreed to do for our county. So we would be better off reallocating that money into hiring people that we're going to do it full-time to empty, to fill up our empty holes that we have, so that we can keep getting these out of the system.
Thank you.
It's just been a huge volume of calls at any given particular time.
Yes, sir. And we are feeling that not only here, but Idaho and other areas, they have the same problem. It's not uncommon to go N U A in a district, especially depending on what's going on in that particular jurisdiction at the time. We're in the height of summer and river season, so we just doubled our numbers on the weekends coming through, and that takes a toll on our system. The other thing is we've, good, bad, whatever press we are getting, people are now starting to use the nine-one-one system, and they know it's out there, where they're starting to see it. And the more that happens, the more they're going to use it, the more they know, okay, nine-one-one is working. If I call nine-one-one, I'm going to get something. And that just starts it to where we talk about the system being overloaded, that's what's going to happen.
On equipment side here, the S C B A stuff, there was some question on the equipment at station one, I guess the filling?
Yes.
Equipment?
Yes. So what we have, our CAD system does not fill appropriately, it is old. However, we have those Mango Hick and Waterton who have new systems that are not an issue when we can go through and fill from them. It is not worth it for us to put the money into that system right now, when we have people on either side of us who are willing to help us with that.
So it wasn't reasonable to try to do anything with it?
No.
Because we did ask that question there.
Yeah, and we, that system, one of the big things that people often make a mistake with is there is a difference between an oxygen system and what we use as S C B A and our breathing apparatus. That's just, it's basic air that we breathe, it is not oxygen, it is compressed and done in the same way. So the oxygen has to come through a company that does that and is certified and regulated. Our CAD system can go back and fill those bottles. So if we have one or two that we can do it with, then we're good to go, and we don't need to put the money into that third system. And the one at station two is practically brand new, and they have been more than willing to take our bottles. And we have enough of a backup when we make the purchases that we can swap bottles up, take them up, drop them off, they use it, fill it, and bring it back to us, which we have done with Waterton.
Thank you.
Only thing I wanted to add to this is we, if you go under training, we talked about a firefighter two class with Waterton. Unfortunately, that is not going to happen until 2020. We are competing with hunting season, and no one wants to take firefighter two during hunting season. And they are volunteers, so they get to make that decision. So we are looking at doing it in the spring instead.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks for your presence at National Night Out. That was good to see.
Thank you. It was, it was good, it was a good turnout. We enjoyed it, and I think the kids had a great time climbing all over the apparatus and trying on the firefighter.
Council Homes moved school project update body cast.
Gentlemen, as you're coming to the finish line with Hamilton Homes renovation, I wanted to give you an update on where we stand on our bond proceeds and kind of give you a detailed report on the change orders, resolutions that created all of this. Dr. White will be coming to the board with a representative from Fuller Justin Architects on the 26th, and they will be providing some more additional information. And this basically is just a presentation to lead up to it, so that you have this understanding before they show up. Basically, breakdown on the bond proceeds as you're aware, we requested V P S A bonds to be sold on our behalf. They were sold in November of 2017, and we received funding in the amount of twelve million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand. Because that amount was chosen as the bond proceeds funding needed, that was because the construction estimate for the bond sale was estimated at that time of eleven point five million. That is what we were anticipating it was going to cost us to do the renovation and the expansion. The actual construction response that we received was nine point nine eight million. So you see, there's approximately one point five million of construction contracting and under our estimate. That, of course, has allowed the schools to come and ask for some special change orders, the security of the best fuel, also the facade renewal. And if you remember, also, they had included a request for the gymnasium in the leechers and the bathroom, men, boys and girls bathroom in the gym. They decided to defer that because of the roof issue that they ran into. So at this point, we have a construction contract for nine point nine million. Through the course of the last eighteen months, we've had construction change orders of about five hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And you have in your packet a listing of all of the change orders that have been approved. And as you'll see, there are quite a few of them that, you know, they were just things that were found as we went through the project. As with most of the buildings, the older buildings in the county, we do not have valid or updated construction documents or schematics, and that's what they ran into, especially for some of the utility construction that we did. But the school did do what they should have done with utility construction, which is reducing the scope in that area when they did have a change order request to try to mitigate or reduce the impact of the change order cost. So through the last eighteen months, we have had construction change orders of five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, the additional services, the facade, the security, a five hundred and sixteen thousand. So as of today, we have a little over a million dollars in change orders. So what that brings me to is what Dr. White will be coming and speaking to about on the 26th. Our bond proceeds that were available, twelve point nine million, our construction contract of nine point nine million, change orders of a million. So our total construction cost to date is right at eleven million dollars. And so if you take the bond fund of the twelve point nine million, and you take out the eleven million, that leaves us with about one point eight, one point nine million dollars that's still available. Well, one of the things that we did in our wisdom, thanks in great part to Dan Stuck and to our financial counsel, was we put a resolution in place that would allow us to seek reimbursement for pre-designed work that we expended funds for before the bonds were sold. And in the bond book, it stated how much we could actually collect through that reimbursement. So in March, we withdrew nine hundred and seven thousand dollars to reimburse the county, the school, for the pre-designed schematics. That money then turned around and helped pay off the 2002B V P S A school loan in fiscal of nineteen. So that nine hundred and seven thousand, which we used to reimburse ourselves from the bond, actually went to pay off another one. So it just put us in a better position. So with all of that said, we have a principal balance available of seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, and we accrue interest on this money from the day it was sold. The estimate in the bond book was going to be about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars on interest. Today, we have earned two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. So the interest information is not included in your packet. I was just able to get a final confirmation from V P S A, the Department of Treasury, that that two hundred and fifty-seven thousand can be used for the expansion and renovation project at Hamilton Homes. So Dr. White will be coming to the board on the 26th, asking to use that million dollars that we still have outstanding in the bond proceeds to further additional work at Hamilton Homes. And I include this statement, just so that you will understand that there, these proceeds, the million dollars that was left, have to be used for explicitly the reason that we had the bond sold in the first place, for classrooms, expansion, enrollment growth, new kitchen, cafeteria, auditorium. So whatever presentation that he brings on the 26th will fit in with what is required while the user proceeds certificate. And I also included in the memo that you have, something out of the bond book as well, these proceeds cannot be used for a payment, a repayment, or a payment to the debt. So I want you all to be aware of that, because I know that that question had been brought up several months ago. Is, could we just use any other funds to pay down the debt? We've been paying on this debt for the last eighteen months, pretty much. So we already probably made about a one point five million dollar payment over the last eighteen months. Yes, it would be great to be able to use this million dollars, but it's not allowed. So this is just to make you aware that the funds have been used appropriately, they have been, the school board has managed the project, they have reviewed and approved all of the change orders, but everything comes to the county, to the finance department, and they review the invoices, they make sure that everything is approved, that everything lines up, and then they really want to ask for the drawdowns for payment to the contractor. So this actually is, this process has worked very well. The school has been very easy to work with, the contract has been very easy to work with, and the support that we've received from the Department of Treasury and the V P S A and the staff has been wonderful. But this is the background that you will need for when Dr. White comes to speak to you on the 26th.
Mr. Chairman, and other board members, help me with my memory if it fails me here, Ms. Tastary. Was it, didn't we have some discussion, and maybe my, the sheriff also, but? Was it, didn't we have some discussion, and maybe might, the sheriff also, but didn't we have some discussion about possibly putting a tower on the school to want, to further for emergency interoperability communication for?
I don't remember one. I don't remember a tower. I do have a, remember discussion about repeaters of some sort.
And there wasn't there some discussion that we could possibly use this money also associated with that repeater tower? Antenna or repeater?
With the upgrade, yes. Oh, no, for them, yes.
Right. So that is another potential use for it. It doesn't have to be just a school upgrade. It could be the repeater tower.
Yes, as long as it's within the school and the school's purposes.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, that that, I don't, I don't recall the exact status on that project, but I do recall that we could use this.
Sheriff's unit, not interest.
Not a tower, but repeated within the building.
Right, right. And that was something else that this money could be used for, and I haven't heard anything about that. So maybe, I don't know, I guess I'm just encouraging that, to make sure that that's forwarded into the conversation because, again, I don't know where that stands, but...
Well, I had, I will be bringing the literal upgrade information to the board probably in the next six to eight weeks. But I will go ahead and reach out to Dr. White and ask him to look at that on the repeaters as possibly an option to bring to the board on the 26th.
Thank you.
Our next item is King William County Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual Update. Natasha Langston, Director of Financial Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
County Administrator, Human Resources, and I have identified a few items within the current policies and procedures manual that we feel should be addressed. This evening, we want to present to the Board of Supervisors updates for consideration and would appreciate any additions or changes that the Board suggests. The first chapter we'd like to address is Chapter 3 Pay Plan, Section 3-15 Premia Pay. This section addresses how overtime pay may be incurred, approved and recorded. The update clarifies the usage of comp time or payout of approved overtime. The next section is Section 3-16 Additional Pay and Overtime Procedures. This section covers pay for authorized emergency conditions, work hours. Currently, the Sheriff's Department staff is listed as shall not apply. We would like to include the Fire EMS staff as well to that. The next chapter, Chapter 7 Employee Training and Development, Section 7-3 and 7-4 Application and Approval Authority. The updates we have added to these sections put a process in place to ensure conditions of job-related training policies are filed consistently. The last, I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question as we get through this?
Sure.
Go back to the adding firefighter, emergency medical providers. Do we have a definition of essential personnel? I mean, aren't, isn't, aren't these all considered essential personnel, similar to what the state, the state would classify?
I would say it would be.
So I don't know if we need, if we have a definition for essential personnel that would include like, you know, sheriff, EMS firefighter, saying we maybe ever say essential personnel through multiple places in the document rather than listing out the positions everywhere? Just a suggestion, something to consider if we don't have a definition for essential personnel already.
It's referenced in the paragraph, if you read on it.
Essential personnel can vary depending on the type of emergency you have, like it might be different for hurricane or for something else. There is a policy, an administrative policy that was adopted five years ago that designates positions that are, you know, essential to certain types of events and not for others. So it could be different.
Okay. All right, so we have a separate policy that talks about essential personnel?
It's really more of an SOP. I mean, this policy authorizes the administrator to flesh it out, if you will. My recollection is that there is a policy that defines who those folks are for, depending on the situation.
Okay. And just, if it was several years ago, do we reference firefighters and things like that in that? I mean, we might want to look at, look at that in conjunction with this, so, sorry, go ahead.
So the last update, Chapter 7, is Section 7-5 Repayment and Training Funds. The update to this section will clarify repayment to the county for training expenses, if, one, employee does not complete, two, employee leaves the county prior to course of program, three, employee leaves the county within 12 months of completion of his course of program. Chapter 13 is the last chapter we'd like to address. This chapter covers miscellaneous employment policies. Under Section 13-6 Uniform and Personnel Equipment, we would like to add the language to ensure any uniform requirement is included in the county job description document. Section 13-11 Use of Tobacco Products in Public Facilities and Vehicles. We recommend adding language to include e-cigarettes. Section 13-14
All right, thank you.
14 is on 13.23 is the page number for outside employment. We have added language to clarify the responsibility of the full-time employee when obtaining and working a secondary job. Section 13-19 Travel and Expense Reimbursement Policy. We are recommending deleting travel advances and clarifying appropriate documents that validate reimbursement for travel expenses. In this section, we also address the usage of county fleet vehicles for travel, the rate per mile for reimbursement if personal vehicle is driven, and cite MapQuest or Google Maps as acceptable methods of validation mileage. Section 13-25 Use of County Vehicle. The update to this section adds language addressing take-home vehicles are not to be driven to secondary employment. And final recommended update is adding Section 13-27 Electronic Communication and Social Media. By adding this section, we hope to formulate policy language establishing guidelines and expectations concerning employee use of social media and electronic communication.
So, a couple of questions, 13, 14. Of course I have a question, everybody knows I have questions. So county employees only have to notify their department head, they don't have to get approval?
Right.
Okay. So there's not a, an approval form associated with outside employment? All right. What's the rationale for that? About actually granting approval?
Well, the rationale is basically the fact that I don't feel like as the county administrator that I have the authority to grant that approval. The individual is primarily employed, it's their full-time job at the county. If they take a secondary job, that is up to them, but they do need to let their employer know so that if their work public degrades, then at that point, at least the department head knows that there may be additional costs. But I do not want to have to track that. I know with the state that they require you to inform and resubmit it every year, but that's just, you don't have to worry.
And it's not just for employment, you know, say you're, say you're a lawyer and you're environment, you're volunteering your time for the Bay Foundation or Southern Environmental Law or something like that. It's anything that's a potential conflict of interest, not, I mean, you can do it for free, but if it's a conflict of interest, so it goes even farther. Okay. Sorry, I have one other.
Well, the gentleman, Mr. Chairman, he's looking for his. So the Section 7-5, which is the county employee being responsible for reimbursement if they separate from the county voluntarily within 12 months of completing the training, that's, it's already referenced in that paragraph. Is there a reason that we give it its own section? Is it just for clarity or?
It's for clarity.
Okay.
Is 12 months reasonable for that?
We've checked with several other counties on whether procedures are, for example, for fires, you have to be trained and things like that, just some of the expenses that may occur. And Hanover was one of them that, that is what they asked, yes.
And the key to all this with any jurisdiction, a lot of jurisdictions have dual and never enforce it. If you don't enforce it, the corporation will.
And that's why we have that section, Section 7-3, I mean, yeah, Section 7.3, 7.4. That's the process where it has to come before our HR designee, or she tracks that, she keeps up with the employee's folder, she's making all the notes in the employee's folder, we have copied certification of, you know, completion of the program in the employee's folder, will be documented at all. So we'll have that document, the department head will also, but we'll have it also.
And is this covering, you know, like career development, optional stuff, or is this also going to include mandatory courses for employees?
This was just to cover just courses that personnel have showed interest to approve to better their, or their job, specific to their job.
So it's tied back to their job description?
Correct.
And you apply the EMS inspection or whatever it might be.
Yes.
My, I recall my other question was in terms of the mapping, because, you know, if you're going to Northern Virginia or Tiger Water, looking maps may say, you know, we found a shortcut and it may be, you know, 50 miles more because it's avoiding a crash on a highway or something like that. We're going to accept that, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be, I mean, because if you print it from your computer, it may not be the same mileage as driving on your car. How do those two interact?
We can discuss that. I know there is an app out there that we could request our personnel to download onto their phone that keeps track of mileage specific to that. We thought this would probably be feasible.
Well, I think the section is written to encourage use of the county vehicles rather than using personal vehicles and getting reimbursed for mileage and, you know, with that in mind.
I think short, it's probably more oriented towards short, even short term, like, you know, if you want to use your car to, you know, Richmond or Alamo or site inspection or something versus driving to Augusta County or something for a conference is a way, I agree with you, drives, kind of drives you, if we use the word drive, drives you in the direction of using a county vehicle.
It's not a bad way that it's written.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted, I know that's a potential, you know, if you're driving, because you know, that actually, the printout of a map may be different than your mileage on your odometer because of those kinds of things that come up on the course of driving from place to another. So it's something to consider.
If that's something that you guys think that that's not feasible, I can look into finding out, you know. It's a free app, we can easily figure out how we can get that information to the employees too, if they can download to us. Is that valid?
Then that's a...
I'm okay with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I'd say leave the lawyers downloading and make them have a phone, then we'll be paying for the phone.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Are there any more questions?
Anything else?
And we'll be acting on this at the 26th, so any additional comments between now and then, get them in.
And thank you for your time and consideration on the requested updates.
Thank you for your effort.
And continue right on. The auditor's letter of intent, Natasha Langston.
The two letters provided in your packet are from the auditing firm, Brown and Edwards. These letters provide details of services the auditors will provide during the audit of fiscal year 2019. Staff is recommending approval and requesting consent.
Would you mind reading those letters alow for?
Sure.
Okay, that's good. Tom, sorry, you said you wanted action on this tonight, or is this just?
We would appreciate action. We would like Jim to sign approving that. The Brown and Edwards are eager to get that approved.
We don't have to have a resolution or?
Generally, this is held in the consent agenda section, but Brown and Edwards was party at getting this to us this year.
Well, that doesn't typically mean it is voted upon then. So I'll make the motion authorize, to authorize the chairman of the board to sign the letter of permission.
Second.
Tell me to vote.
If we handle it in the consent agenda, then it's a voted upon thing, so it'll live in progress.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Erhardt?
I'm still looking through it. If there was an opportunity for any discussion.
I have, I've read about as many of these letters as I care to read in my life at this point. I did, I did force myself to just find the highlight sections in there. And it covers the same scope of work that we've gotten out of our, our letter here.
I'm trying to fuel my agenda.
Aye.
Mr. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye. I have a motion, Jim.
Or German, so move.
Second.
Mr. Erhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Skowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Hodge?
Aye. Me and his dear.